I hadn't get started. It is 1:02. So good afternoon. The November 12th Board of Education Special Board Meeting is called to order. All is called to order. At this time, a motion will be in order to approve the agenda. Do you have a motion?
I move we approve the agenda. This is Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Do you have a second?
This is Carol. I second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. All right. Motion carried. That brings us to our agenda topic here. Calendar changes. And I will turn it over to Dr. Lewis and his team. It's listed Samri and Sarah as leading this discussion.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks, Samri. And Sarah is in the boardroom, so they may step up. First, I want to thank the board for agreeing to meet on such a short notice. I want to address that short notice. We were really trying to move swiftly in getting a meeting set to provide families ample amount of time to make arrangements should this proposal pass. And so that was the rationale or the timing of this board. I mean, we could have waited till Monday, but we didn't want to put families in even more of a situation in terms of finding childcare. And so we have received a tremendous amount of feedback. So thank you to all of our staff, families for sharing your feedback on this proposal. And so what we are proposing, Samri and Sarah, are you there yet? What we are proposing is a calendar change that would allow our staff and students to begin their Thanksgiving break, that Monday, in Sheafsey. And so essentially, they will be out the entire week. A couple of reasons there is this year has been extremely challenging for our staff and families and all the students and all involved. I've heard some say, and in many instances, I would have to agree, that this year has been more trying than last year. You know, you think about last year and the things that we went through, and then think about where we are now. And I think what has happened is we are dealing with some of the residual impacts that COVID, this pandemic, has had on all of us here in this community. And so when I'm out in buildings and I'm seeing our staff engaging in learning, and I'm seeing staff hurting as well. And then I began to hear from staff that they're hurting in terms of just mental and their social, emotional health. I remember going into a teacher's classroom, always full of joy, full of joy in this classroom. And I visited the classroom a couple of weeks ago, that joy was, the spark, I could just tell the spark was, was very low. And these are some, some of our amazing teachers that give it their all. And so this is what we're, we're proposing. This has not been a, a normal year. And I think we would fool ourselves if we continue to think that it has been a normal year. Our staff have been stepping up in additional ways, dealing with shortages that every industry in this country is facing in terms of staff. We are not immune to that. And so our staff are stepping, stepping up to take on those additional roles and, and duties. Some of them are giving up their planned time and not having their, their planned time to kind of get that recharge. Some of them are barely getting lunch. And so we need to take action to listen to our staff and give them the opportunity, our staff and students. I've heard it from students as well, give them the opportunity to rest and recharge so they can come back and finish this semester off, off strong. And so by doing this, we are listening to the concerns of our staff and students and that, and those feedbacks. And then we have to grapple with the question is, what, what are we willing to risk? Or what, what are we willing to compromise to, to make these bold adjustments when necessary? Just so, just to give you some additional information on these Mondays and Tuesdays and while we landed on these Mondays and Tuesdays.
Dr. Dr. Lewis.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I have to interrupt because GR is trying to get into the meeting. And he has been in contact with Elise and whatever link he is using, the event password is not allowing him to enter the board meeting. So can we pause for a moment to allow him? I think this discussion is important enough and the information you have to share is important enough. Can, I'm requesting Erica, can we recess for a minute to allow him to get into the meeting and participate?
Yes, we'll recess.
Or just pause the.
We'll pause.
The, the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'll run around here and see if I can help trouble shoot as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. I apologize for interrupting.
I see GR has been able to join, so we can proceed.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I don't know what happened, but I'm here.
Glad you're here, GR. Dr. Lewis.
Okay, thank you. I have to get back to the, back to the office.
Okay.
Again, just, just sharing the concerns that we were hearing and actually seeing as it relates to staff absenteeism, our shortage of staff, staff that are stepping up to take on additional duties and how they are giving up their breaks to, to be a team player. You know, what's, which is what they are, are doing. And so we think about just where we are with this, with this pandemic, and because of the volatility, volatility of this, this virus, what it has played on our staff. We, we represent this proposal to give them that time to relax and recharge. So I also, I don't have the sharing capabilities, but I'll just kind of share with you. When our superintendent advisory council met two or three weeks ago, I posed a question to that group that just simply asked, I can find it. As we continue our work this school year, what are the most important things our district need to rethink or need to think about in order to support all students? And so there you have a very student-centered question. And the responses that I received were overwhelmingly, what are we doing to take care of our staff? And I think he's now has given me the presenter right, so I will share really quick here. So I'll just share this. And so this, this word cloud from this, from this thought exchange, this is the number of, the words are, are showing up by the number of times that they were referenced in this thought exchange. And so you can see staff here was mentioned quite a few times in this thought exchange. Then we will look at the thoughts. So what are they saying about staff? Or what are they saying about learning is struggling? Struggling was the largest word there. And so if you look at a couple of these thoughts here, staff well-being, time to do the work we're asked. Teachers are stressed and are struggling to keep up with new initiatives. Many of our kids are struggling emotionally and psychologically as we make our way through this pandemic. They need time to process. If our kids aren't in a healthy headspace, they can't learn. We need to provide them space for that. And then a student's perspective, I think this could be very useful, speaking of the calendar proposal. This year coming back from COVID has been full of adjustments for faculty and students. A mental health day would be in everyone's favor. And I, I do want to say that I appreciate our, our parents and community for agreeing that our staff do need this break. We do recognize and understand the challenges that this presents in terms of, of childcare. I will say we're all still actively working with some organizations to address the childcare. That is something that's still ongoing. But we do believe that in order for our teachers to be them, them, their best, best selves, it's important for us to listen to them first of all, respond and make sure that we are creating the space that, you know, we always talk about self-care. Educators practice self-care. Well, when do they have time to practice self-care? And so what we want to do is give them that gift of time to practice self-care, give, give our students that time to recharge, spend time with family, and then come back and finish the year strong. Any questions or comments?
Um, I will hold mine until a little bit later. Board members have any questions or feedback? Shannon? Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Lewis, um, do, I have heard anecdotally over the years that these two days that we're talking about, the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, are challenging from a staffing perspective in a, in a normal year, and that we have usually have much higher planned and unplanned rates of absences amongst staff and students. I would guess that would be exacerbated this year. Do you have any data from HR regarding what we know already about our need for subs and absences on those two days that we already know about in advance? And whether that is trending at a level above what we would see in an ordinary year?
Yeah, so, um, yes, we do have that information. And so last year obviously was a, a difficult year. And so probably can't, couldn't look at last year because, because I think around that time we were, many of our staff and students were remote in our, in our hybrid. But we did go back and look at 2019 and 2018. So between those two years, as a matter of fact, it's, it's, it was very close. 2018, we had about 228 absences for those two days. And then in 2019, 227. So far this year, that, these are staff that have already put in their absences for those two days, 124. And so you, you, you know, you think about those numbers and think about our struggle to staff buildings now with, with substitutes. It, it may be a challenge on, on those two days as well.
Erica, can I ask a follow-up? Do we have, uh, is there data that you can share with the board on our, our fill rate for subs currently in terms of? I, and I don't, I, I don't want to count other teachers in our buildings covering for their colleagues. Like, do we know, do we know of those positions we're trying to bring in, somebody in from our staffing company? What, uh?
To fill out.
What the gap is there? I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm hearing anecdotally that there just are no subs available. And so staff are not taking days off or doing other things, going to doctor's appointments, et cetera, et cetera. Because literally, if they do it, it means their colleagues have to cover for them because there is nobody else. And I'm, I'm just trying to find out what, what our data is showing about that anecdotal information.
Yeah, yeah. And Sarah and Samri are there in the boardroom, so they can step up to the podium to give you some information on our staff fill rate. But you're absolutely right. Our staff, you know, it's, you know, you may have a, an absence, but you have other, another colleague maybe across the hall that are taking on your students as well. And so Samri or Sarah?
Good evening. Samri Devon, HR. We currently, we don't have a specific percentage fill rates for you right now. I can get those. I didn't, I, sorry, I don't have those in front of me right now. But please know, we have had, we do have a smaller pool of substitutes to work from this year as compared in the past. We are having some of our positions that we normally fill with substitutes. We have elected not to this year. And so right now, we're focusing on our general ed classroom teachers, our core teachers. So the, it, so the data would look a little different from year to year. But now we usually, I mean, Morgan Hunter or the, the company that we use is, is working extremely hard every morning to try to fill our absences. We do have unfilled absences each day. Usually on certain days, Mondays and Fridays are, are higher rates. I would say if I had to guess, maybe a fill rate would probably be as an average would be in the eighties somewhat. So eighty, eighty-three, eighty-four percent.
To clarify, Samri, so what you said about we're focusing on generalized teachers. So I have heard from some of our specialized positions, title, teachers, et cetera, that they have, that, that the policy this year is, they just won't get a sub to fill those positions when those people are absent because we just don't have enough subs.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes. And what we have done is we have looked at other districts surrounding our districts as to how they are managing this. And some of our title teachers, librarians, ESL, they're important, important work that they're doing each and every day. But we are not filling those positions.
Okay. Um, thank you for that information.
Special education teachers, though.
Any other board members have any comments? Kelly, go ahead.
Uh, Dr. Lewis, can you confirm that our classified staff will be paid for the two days that are, the two extra days they'd be taking off? And where that money would come, and how we would compensate them? It wouldn't come from their leave, I guess.
Yeah, this is Sarah. Yeah, that's correct. And we would go ahead and pay classified staff members as well as certified teachers and administrators the same way in which they were regularly scheduled to be paid for that day. So if, if they were supposed to work an eight-hour day on Monday and Tuesday, they would be paid for an eight-hour day on Monday and Tuesday. And they would not have to use their own accrued leave for that. That would just come out of, it would be like a director approved leave type situation.
Thank you. I have additional questions, Erica, but I'm going to go ahead and wait in case someone else is going to ask them first.
Yeah. Hi, hi. This is Carol. Just to follow up with Kelly's question, can you please inform, let us know if the bus drivers are going to be paid as well?
I.
Or, or Samri.
Yeah, yeah. I, I apologize for that. I don't, Ron is not here, but I can follow up with that pretty quickly in just a few moments. If you can give me some time on that one. I believe we're contracted, but let me see for those, for those days already.
This is Erica. So just like all of you, I'm sure, you received hundreds of emails since the notification went out yesterday evening. And so they're really, I would say nearly 100% of the parents that emailed me were 100% in support of, they've recognized that teachers have, and educators and district staff in general, they have been through an incredibly challenging time. And they're all very supportive, the majority were, um, were all very supportive of honoring time for mental health because they understand that is important, especially when people are, you know, investing in our students. And so there really was not any, hardly any pushback on acknowledging that and giving time to teachers and staff. The questions came about or that were raised were, what is the urgency? Why, why is this happening so quickly? Where is this sense of urgency coming from? What's driving it? And are there any other options and considerations for different timings? So not a no, because they absolutely think it's important and they recognize that. But could we consider delaying this and adding additional time? If memory serves, the dates January 6th and 7th were coming up often. Is there a way to add to the winter break time? So if you could speak to the sense of urgency, what's driving that? Because it seems more reactionary instead of something that was planned. And we understand, I mean, the parents do understand that when we do have snow days, we live in Kansas. And so we have to plan for those and we have to adjust accordingly very quickly with, with very little notice. This is not the same thing as that. So from what I'm hearing in the hundreds of emails I receive. So can you speak to the sense of urgency that's driving that? And if there are any other considerations for a different time of doing this? Except, such as expanding, like extending the winter break?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I saw some of those questions in the emails I received as well. And the, the, the sense of urgency is simple. It's our teachers and staff well, well-being. That's the sense of urgency around making sure our, our teachers are, want to continue in this work because we think, look at our number of resignations that we've had. And so I would, I would say this is not reactionary. It's more preventing, the, the attempt is try to prevent more, more teachers from leaving the profession. And it's trying to prevent, you know, just that breaking point, you know, and also trying to prevent us from closing school, a school due to no staff, you know. So that's the sense of urgency around that. The other options was mentioned around December or January, which is quite a ways out. That's something that we can entertain. But I will tell you that, that's already a long period of time being off. And I remember during my time as a teacher, I was ready to come back right after Christmas. And so to add more days there, that could be an option. Another option could be instead of, of the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we could do the Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving. If families feel that'll give them more time to, um, to, to plan. And I will say this, you know, the, the profession of an educator is not as noble as it used to be. I remember there were times where the, the educator was looked at as a noble profession. And with some of the emails I received, it appears that some think that we have daycare, they're operating daycare centers. Our educators are not childcare. They're, they're actually educators. And so as we think about them as a, as a professional and their mental health and well-being, we have to ask ourselves again, what are we willing to sacrifice? What are we willing to, to, yeah, sacrifice to wrap our arms around our educators? You've heard me say this before, that this community supports its schools. I didn't see that in a lot of emails. And so I, I, that's what I'm, I'm asking this community to wrap arms around our educators who will, obviously, who are wrapping their arms around our students. So that one, we can retain quality staff in this district and continue to provide excellent educational opportunities for all of our students.
This is Melissa. And I heard the beginning and I.
This is Melissa. And I heard the beginning and I had to kind of step away when um, we were trying to get GR. Um, and I just wanted, I mean, I share those sentiments, I um, as an educator. And I mean, I, I thought about all the different ways and the politically correct way to say it. And I don't, I don't really care for the PC term anymore. But it is, the fact of the matter, it is, it is true. Teachers are tired, teachers are stressed, no matter how much they love doing what they do. Kids are tired, kids are stressed, um, even though they enjoy being in school. And like you said, that's the, I, I think that was well said as far as how you put it, the, the urgency is now because it's at the breaking point. I will tell you, to be personal, like you kind of learned about the, the, the um, the compass back then, upfront and personal. There was one day that I was on my way to school and I was overwhelmed and I cried. And I had, I was ready to check myself into the hospital because I was having a breakdown. And I love my students. And, and I, but I just felt overwhelmed. A lot of these teachers are like that. Take me aside, our narratives are not, may not be similar, but I had the opportunity to shadow an administrator in four nine seven. And these, and the teachers and the students, they were on it, doing what they have to do. But they were also tired. If you look at their body, you learn empathy, paying attention to body language, they were exhausted. And they were trying to, they need a break. Uh, and I like what you said, Dr. Lewis, whether it is Monday and Tuesday here or Monday, Tuesday after the Thanksgiving break, it is needed. You want, you, you want your, um, this is for parents. You want your, your students to have a positive learning environment. Let them get a break, let the parents, because the next thing you know, we're going to be sitting up here in board meetings talking about how, oh, so and so snapped at my, my, my student and lost it. Give them a break. Let them come back, refreshed, renewed. I have students in my, my, my classes in my past few years where they are extremely tired. You know what I do? I let them sleep for an hour. Guess what? When they wake up, they are fully ready to learn. And they haven't lost any learning. But because they needed that rest so that they could be able to function. You, the students need it too. When you have second graders, first graders having fun, enjoying the lessons, doing this, but saying, oh, I'm so tired. I'm so tired. I understand, let's take a brain break. So I am one hundred percent in support of it. I know it's not popular, may not be a popular thing, but I'm a hundred percent in support of it. And it's not just to help the staff, yes. It helps the staff, but it helps your child as well, helps the students as well. Sorry, I'm done.
All right, comments from any other board members?
Listen, a comment, you might have mentioned this already, Dr. Lewis, but will teachers have to make up the time, the teaching time?
No?
No, that, that, no. Uh, the intent is for them to um, recharge. And so we don't want to, it's almost like an insult to say, we can give you these days here, but you have to make them up to end of the year. And just so the board and the community know, we looked at our required number of minutes by the state and we are still well over our required number of minutes um, that are required um, by the state.
I'm sorry, and Eric from First Student is actually in this meeting. So we are working out some things for our bus drivers to be paid, so.
Erica, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question because some of the emails we received expressed uh, the concern about what uh, what Dr. Lewis just mentioned, but also about what happens when we have uh, inclement weather days in the um, in the winter semester. Um, Dr. Lewis, can you just remind the board and, and the community what the state's policy is about those inclement weather days to clarify that?
Yes, we have a built in snow day um, in our, our calendar. And then we look at those minutes, we are required to have one thousand one hundred and sixteen minutes. Um, I was looking at this the other day. Um, even with these two days, we still will be, I don't see it. It, it, it's really equivalent to about five days that we still have, um, should we need them for severe weather. Samri, is anything you want to add relative to the calendar and, and snow days?
Yeah, with their inclement weather day built in in April, so the, the state will also forgive us for one, so we could have two days. And in the past, what we've done is we've had, had to, when we've been short on hours, extend the school day for a little bit of the time too, like five minutes, ten minutes. So to make, if we needed to make up time.
I have additional questions, real. Um, so a couple, a couple observations. One, we did have a, a couple, uh, we did have some very compelling emails from our area nonprofits and the impact that this closure may have on our most marginalized families, particularly those um, from our lower income families and um, individuals experiencing intimate partner violence or domestic violence within their home. Um, so just acknowledging that, that I think I heard you say at this top of the meeting that you're looking at partnering to expand emergency childcare um, opportunities for folks that might need it during that time period. That's something that you're looking at.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Um, and then additionally with those families, we had, not with just those families, but other families as well. We've had questions around meals um, and access to food uh, during those days. How do we typically handle that on a snow day or? Because I'm certainly, we, part of the, the break would be also for our food service workers as well.
Yes, that's correct. That's so that our food services will not be in service today. Uh, we can, uh, I think we already have a compiled list of community partners that provide meals and food for, that we can share as well.
Okay, so that would be part of the um, work will be to, to also partner with our community partners that work on um, making food security, sounds like, okay. And then finally, I wanted to know on negotiations, one of the things we've talked about is another space where we see a real need for mental health breaks for staff is in the um, spring. So the urgency that Melissa described is certainly resonates with me. I have seen that. And you know, to Erica's point about the, the, the childcare, um, you know, here, respecting what you've, you've said, Dr. Lewis, about childcare not being our primary role is certainly one of the things that we saw come to light in terms of it's, it, our, our function as a, a district during the pandemic. So to me, those are the two tensions right now. And I want to avoid there being this dichotomy of we're doing this right thing for teachers, or we're doing this right thing for families. Because as Melissa eloquently said, this is actually maybe the possibility to do the right thing for everyone, depending on the framing. Um, so with that in mind, the spring semester, uh, we have talked about how we have very serious um, needs for break for staff historically, not just during these times where we're having high stress for our public educators. But we were told, I believe, that we couldn't build that time in, in the spring. So I just want to double check um, as we move forward with this, this request, that we're also thinking about the spring. My, I, I believe I'm remembering, and maybe Samri can jump in and tell me, that we were not able to provide that break through negotiations in the spring?
Samri, do you, do we call that?
We, we do have a day in April. Uh, Sarah is looking at the specific day right now. What day?
And that day is affirmed even regardless of what the snow days are.
Yes, that's April fifteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm, but I would, you know, to that note, Kelly, I would um, ask that our, and we'll, we'll talk about this, our calendar committee began to look at next year and uh, subsequent years, you know, lessons learned, what have we learned this year? I think going into this year, we assumed that this would be somewhat of a normal year. But we're seeing how there is a need for, to your point, more breaks. Um, so I, I think this will allow us an opportunity to look at our calendars for next year and year after next and, and look at where can we put those breaks in um, appropriately.
This is Erica. I have a follow up question about childcare. Um, so I hope soon that we can stop the narrative of, you know, people viewing the school district as childcare. Very few people, I believe, view the school district as childcare. So we have to stop that narrative because it's divisive and it's inaccurate. Um, the second thing is, when we're talking about we're working toward, you know, getting childcare and adult supervision for our students who are, who will be out of school um, while the teachers get their mental um, health breaks. Um, I'm glad that we're getting this together. My question is, um, who will those services be for? Will it be for everyone? Is it just for the people who are um, connected to services that are directly related to income? Um, will there be for working parents that are more affluent, that still have childcare needs? So I guess two questions there. Um, will it, will it be for sure done? Like, well, we have childcare in place to have supervision for our students. And two, who will the childcare be for? What kind of families?
Yeah, we don't have answers to those questions. We're still working through that. I mean, and again, my, you know, my question would be, you know, what, um, you know, we, we just think about, you know, these decisions and how it does impact. And, and know that, you know, we thought about these things before we even brought them to the board. It's not like, you know, we're just making decisions here and not thinking about these things. We do acknowledge and recognize whether you're a single parent or affluent uh, family, um, the impact on, on childcare. That, that's a, that's a real, that's a real thing. And so again, we are actively working with some community partners and they are, they are pulling, puddling together to see what they can do. And so um, I, I don't want to say, you know, we have X number of seats until we hear, hear from them.
Any other questions, feedback um, for Dr. Lewis, from any of the board members? No? Okay.
Erica, this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to uh, say to the community, um, we did receive a lot of emails. Um, I have read all those emails, um, haven't responded to all of them yet, but please know, uh, community members that reached out to the board. Um, I, and I'm sure um, my colleagues uh, did get a chance to review those, but we are um, uh, sometimes it's hard to get that response out immediately. Thanks.
Agreed. And I just want to reiterate that, again, nearly a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent of the emails I received, um, they were supportive of giving teachers the breaks that they definitely deserve. Um, the rub or the concern was with the timing. That was the only thing. Everything else, yes, let's do this. Please, how can I help? Um, the timing was the main concern. And so I was encouraged that it wasn't no. It was like, yes, let's consider other options that's in the very near term um, to alleviate some of the stress. Um, and acknowledge that what our teachers are going through. Teachers, administrators, district staff in general. So I just wanted to put that out there, that it wasn't a no, it was yes, let's do this, but let's do this together. Let's do this together and not, um, anyhow, that, I just wanted to share, that was the sentiment and the consensus from the emails that I received overwhelmingly so.
Yeah, um, one of the things that kind of I just have to get out is just the, you know, going back to the, the beginning, I know it's um, before the new board took place, the, the need when we first had started and um, Dr. Lewis and the leadership team was like, we're going to go through school, we're going to go with school, you know, the, 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 the threat or the levels of, of the orange, yellow, green. It wasn't an imminent, imminent um, need to with um, start schools or delay schools. And we got those same emails, like, how dare you? What are you going to do? You know, like, why are you going to start school? And the emails that I, I received is talking about, we're delaying, um, we've already missed enough school and things like that. And now we have the opportunity to take two extra days for staff and students to get a mental health break. To, so that we can come in, they can come in better, refreshed and ready to, 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 to go until that next break. And now it's met with opposition. It's like, we can't, we're danged if we do, we're danged if we don't. There's always some kind of resistance. And um, sometimes you got to go against the grain, um, because you got to think about the ultimate. And I think um, the narrative of trying to um, portray that um, oh, because we're being so fast or so abrupt is something, somebody's lying or withholding that. And that's, and that's what I've seen in some of the emails. We got to stop that too. Just because there's something that is an immediate change, doesn't mean that somebody is trying to lie or be deceptive. You know, so.
Thank you for those comments, Melissa. Any other comments moving forward? All right, so.
I, I just wanted to, I just want to, because I know this is a really challenging um, vote to, to make. In some regards, it's, it's not, um, in that, that the, the move, I want to acknowledge, Dr. Lewis, the move that you and your team are, are making to acknowledge that we need to do something to support our staff and to support their overall morale and to really be true to the work that we've been trying to do around social emotional well being to ultimately provide um, better learning environments for our teachers. So we've had these kind of heavy questions, but I do want to say that regardless of this vote, I really appreciate the direction, the sentiment and the ideas behind prioritizing um, that at, at your leadership level. So I wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Agreed. Well said, Kelly.
So, so um, you know, in considering the comments around time, uh, families need more time. The option that I mentioned earlier, is that something that the board would like to consider? It'll, it'll give parents um, more days to, to plan. So instead of the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving, the Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving, is that a, an option the board wants to consider?
This is Carol. I would consider the Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving because this is such a, it's, it's a crisis. To me, I'm, I'm a, I'm a mental health professional. But to me, this is a crisis driven uh, solution or a recommendation. So I, I do, I do recognize the high burden that this is going to take on. It, the physical, mental toll on everybody in this system, the parents, teachers, the staff, the whole community at large. I do have to consider the physical safety of our students who may not have access to childcare. So I, I wouldn't consider the Monday and Tuesday after Thanksgiving break.
I also like, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
I just wanted to say, you know, as, as we're discussing this, still keep in mind um, um, the impact that if there is a sub shortage for that Monday and Tuesday of, of Thanksgiving, um, it might not be, you know? But still, you still want to keep that at the forefront as well.
I also um, received an email from some teachers that were, they obviously are a support of having a mental health day. Um, but their concerns were, we've spent a lot of time doing our lesson plans, we have everything lined out. And then now we're going to have to adjust for this semester. And so that was a concern that I saw, that was a recurring theme among some of the teachers who were, again, very supportive of this, but concerned about the impact it would have on their lesson plans that they've already prepared.
Erica, uh, this is Shannon. I, I, I saw that in a handful of emails, but also um, recognize that if we choose to do some variation of this plan, that's going to be an impact no matter which days we choose. Because we'll either be impacting the week of Thanksgiving, which, let's just be honest, as parents, traditionally is not the week that a lot of new stuff gets introduced because a lot of kids are gone already. Um, uh, or it'll impact those days after Thanksgiving, or if we did another variation of it, putting it on to the beginning of winter break, then that starts to impact high school final schedules. So um, I'm not sure that there's an answer here um, that protects uh, totally protects those concerns. Um, I, I wanted to propose to the board to think about this. Um, before we start talking about alternative times to do this, um, perhaps it would be good for um, perhaps it would be good procedurally for the board to make the motion, uh, that's been recommended by administration and see what, what the support is for that proposal. And if that motion does not pass, then we can talk about additional options. Um, I, I don't, I don't, not everybody has, has clearly stated where they are, um, in terms of what they're gonna, um, how they would vote on the proposal, but I would, I would like to give, um, give our body an opportunity to consider the proposal from administration first. That would, that would be my suggestion.
All right, you can definitely do that. Do we have a motion? As stated and presented by administration?
I'll do it. I move the Board of Education approved the revision to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar to extend the fall break to include Monday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and Tuesday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
This is Melissa, I second.
Hill?
No.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
No.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes five two.
Trying to get off of here. Okay. Um, can I have, can I have a moment, um, to just address my vote, please?
And after you do that, I will address mine as well.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say to, uh, the community and, um, parents that reached out to us. Um, I, I hear you and I acknowledge what you're experiencing and I, I'm, am not, um, ignoring that in my decision today. Um, however, I think that as a board member, um, based on my years of experience and what I know about the current environment, um, of what is happening within our schools, um, this, it, this is not an ordinary year, and in fact, in some ways, um, it is more difficult for our staff even than last year was. Um, and there are, uh, a number of factors that are coming together to, um, cause me to have extreme concern, and I cannot overstate this, extreme concern about the future of all of our schools, but certainly our district, to retain our highly qualified staff, keep them in our buildings and continue to provide, um, the high quality expecta, education that our community expects and that our students deserve. Um, I cannot ignore what is actually happening on the ground and the experiences of our students and staff right now, um, and the fact that mid-year resignations are not something I ever have seen in my, over a decade of doing this, and we have had quite a few this year. I am aware that there are staff who are considering leaving, um, at the end of the semester. Um, that's almost unheard of because our staff are under contract and they know that there are severe consequences potentially to their professional careers and futures by choosing to leave a district mid-year. Um, we, um, boards of education, districts have the op, option to file a complaint and ask to have a teacher's license revoked for that. So it is a, it is a cry for help to me that we have educators who are saying, I have reached the point where I can't, I can't even finish out a semester, um, in this, um, in this profession right now. There is not, there are not people knocking down the door to take those jobs uh, for a whole variety of reasons that are related to a lot of public policy issues, school funding issues and everything else. Um, this is one small step that I see I can take to say to our staff and our students that I care about you. I want you to be successful. Um, and I know that right now that many of you are, have exceeded your breaking point. Um, and so I just, I wanted to say that because I know there are lots of, uh, emails I received from families who just really don't, um, don't have the, the, the insights in terms of the experience, um, knowing what, what is going on within, within the building and with our teachers. Um, and I'm just, I'm very, very concerned. So I wanted to share that because I, I don't take this decision lightly. Um, I know that no matter what decision I made today, there will be people, um, who would be very upset about it. Um, and I thought about it very, very deeply before, uh, casting this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And, um, my comments in regard to my vote is that, um, we all care about students and staff. We all understand that this has been a very tough, very tough time on, um, everyone, um, including teachers and, um, and staff. And so the no was not a no. It was, let's see if we can find a little bit of better time, moving it out. Even just another week or so, um, would be helpful to our, to our families. Um, because then sometimes it's like shifting the burden. Um, how can we do this together collectively as a community to help each other, pull each other up? Um, instead of continuing what unfortunately seems to be this narrative of divisiveness? And I just really hope that, um, we can do, anyhow. Um, so that's the reason rationale for my vote. Um, again, not a no, it's just let's, hopefully, I was hopeful we could find a, a better time to do this. Um, still timely and still having that sense of urgency because we do understand and recognize the significance and the severity of the issue. Um, so that was, I just want that on record, um, for the minutes. So is there any other comments?
Hi, this is Carol, I would like to explain my, uh, uh, echo your words, Erica. I, I, I lost ample amounts of sleep over this decision, but it's, it's, again, it's not a no. I recognize that our teachers, our staff, they need the mental health break. But with my note, I, I took in consideration that the district is still working on alternative childcare. And because there's no guarantee of childcare, I cannot, with a clear conscious vote, I couldn't have voted yes. Because as we've heard time and time again, that hope is not a strategy, we do not hope for childcare. So that's why I voted a no. Thank you.
Right.
I'll just, and I'll just add to that and say that, and what, and one of the, my good takeaways from this, because I agree with Carol, it was a really challenging, um, vote to make, uh, but I felt like a really important one. And the dialogue that we were able to have with the community and the, the messages that we heard from our teachers and the messages that we heard from our parents and our community members around, really, we do need safety net for childcare. I've heard Erica talk very eloquently about the, the childcare we need at the beginning of the day and the end of the day to support our families. So that's something I think as a board, we can take away from this too, in terms of our work moving forward. And then additionally, just to say, the teachers that, that contacted us and said, I needed this so much that I broke down crying, I didn't even know. To me, like, the other thing I would like to do as we, as we move out of this meeting is to celebrate the fact that our teachers and our, and our students have nine days to be with them, their family, to take care of their needs that they've not been able to take care of because of a sub shortage or whatever other reason. So I appreciate the board, um, having this dialogue and, and bringing it to the forefront because while it's only two days, um, in my world, which is also Carol's world, that's, that mental health world, two days can mean a whole lot for books. So thank you all very much for this, for opening up this conversation to the community.
All right, thank you for those comments, um, Carol and Kelly. So do you have a motion to adjourn?
This is Shannon, I'm, I move to adjourn.
This is Carol, I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you all.